Dissertation.
Good evening and welcome. We're certainly glad you're here. I do want to take a liberty. It's not on the agenda, but I want to introduce you and congratulate our new police chief, Police Chief Weems. Okay, now we'll open with a prayer. Mr. Bolden.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us by just for a moment. Heavenly Father, we pray that you guide us always, satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting. Strengthen us as we make decisions. Please guide us so that this meeting can be productive. Let us be effective and decisive. We thank you for each and every one who is here today. You have blessed us with supportive people who seek the best for your people in our city. May we engage with the citizens in positive participation in our community. We pray for unity of purpose so that good strategies and plans may be implemented. We pray you would make us strong and courageous for the road ahead. We pray this prayer, trusting and believing in you. Amen.
Thank you. I'll call this meeting to order if you'll rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is open forum. I don't believe we have anyone signed up to speak. So we will move on to number four, work session. Items included under the work session are intended to provide opportunities for City Council to study and discuss various issues and gather and analyze information. Council will not take formal action on matters presented at a work session, but may direct staff to place items relating to the matter on future agendas for formal consideration. So A is hold a discussion regarding the capital improvement plan for the city of Nacogdoches and a whole host of people. Start with our city manager.
Mayor, members of council, good afternoon. I hope you're doing well today. Mario Canizaro, City Manager. It is going to be a tag team approach. I will tell you, one of the positions listed on there is our Community Services Director. Unfortunately, Mr. Bray had to step away. He has a, unfortunately has a father-in-law that's gravely ill, so he had to step away. And so Jessica Sal, our Assistant Community Service Director, will stand in his stead tonight and present the information regarding his area of the presentation. So I wanted to kind of have a conversation with council. As we mentioned before, there are two workshops. One is tonight that we were wanting to have with the council about the capital improvement plan. The other one is that we had planned it for is November the 10th. Where we want to go with it tonight was really just to have a conversation with council discussion. We're not asking, as the mayor said, we're not asking for taking any action. We're really not asking for you to give us any direction tonight. We just want to kind of lay out our thoughts over the last several weeks that we've been working together as a team to address some of our capital needs. And so just kind of wanted to go through some slides. Don't know where this will go as far as amount of time, but fairly short commentary through the slide deck. And then we certainly can pause at the appropriate stop place and then ask questions of the council and see if you have any feedback on that and then move forward. But again, we're not asking for any direction or any kind of major decisions tonight. Just really just want to have a conversation with council. So, you know, kind of to give you a bit of historical context, almost to the year, last November, we started with council over at the Recreation Center. We had four different workshops dedicated to the CIP to lay out what we saw as were some of the capital needs in the organ, or excuse me, the community. Gave you a binder full of sheets that have project descriptions, justifications, things of that nature. It was a lot of money. We recognize that. We followed that up in early November with sort of summarization of those conversations that we had with council back just a month prior. And then you all said, please come back to us. This is a lot to decipher. Please come back to us with some decision packages and see if we could handle it in much more manageable components. We came back to you in April of 2022 with these tiers. And so that's the next slot, the next slide. We tiered those and tier ones, twos, and threes. Kind of laid out those components for that. And then we moved forward. So the next slide that I'll show you is those projects. You've seen this slide before. It's a little different today than what you've seen in the past. What we've done is we actually have added a column that says recurring. And I'll kind of briefly walk you through it. As you can see, the various funds, the fire facilities, park facilities. You should also have another document at your place, I believe, that gives you a little bit more detail of those things. So again, not that, you're welcome to track along, but if you're looking at fire facilities of 8,600,000, 11,164, 870,000, if you were to do the math, you should be able to track those along this spreadsheet. So, and you've got these divided up in their various tiered categories, ones, twos, and threes. On the far right-hand column of that printed document, you see what's actually adopted in our current budget of this capital project summary sheet. That's what's in the budget as of today. But what you have here on the screen is things that are recurring. There was things that we budget on a normal basis, with the exception of drainage. We don't have a funding source for drainage. We're just making some assumptions that at some point in the future, there may be a funding source for drainage. We're just identifying that as a potential recurring cost that we would probably incur over the long term for drainage. Everything else has a funding source. Streets, streets maintenance, that is a funding source. We've got, we garner about 750,000 in street maintenance through the water bill, that fee that's paid at the water bill. That is about 750 times five, that's 3,750,000 over a five-year period. And then we set aside about 250,000 in the general fund. And then you multiply that times five years, because kind of a five-year outlook on this recurring, that recurring column, it's 1,250,000. So I just wanted to kind of walk you through that real quickly to see if there's any questions about that. I'd just be happy to pause, but I just wanted to kind of walk you through this summary sheet. That recurring is things that we see as being part of the budget on an ongoing basis, because a lot of it is not funded, but would be funded in future budgets. However, the drainage does not have a funding component. We were just assuming that at some point in the future, there would be funding for drainage. So we're just making that assumption at this point, but it's not on the books at this point. I'll be happy to pause at that point if you have any questions before we move any further.
Anybody have questions about how that's laid out?
No, I don't. But I just want to make sure I understand on the street maintenance, the 3,750 is a five-year timeframe.
Yes, sir. It's a five, it's a five-year outlook. So 750, 750,000 times five is 3,750,000.
So the other reoccurring, is that yearly, annually? Is that also on a five-year?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Everything in that column is a five-year outlook.
Thank you.
Okay. And so tier one, everything in that tier one column, for the most part, has not moved, has not changed. The only difference that has changed, and Mr. Bartlett can explain further if you'd like to, our city engineer, our Public Works Director, is the water and wastewater. We've recently have received some bids and we've been able to do some engineering through those projects. And so he's been able to update some of the pricing estimates on water and wastewater. But for the majority of the other, like the fire facility, parks, downtown, city facility, all those components beyond that, those have fairly, for the most part, I believe, have stayed static. And these are the same numbers that you should have seen back over the course of the summer through the budget process and from last April. Seem like you have a question?
I do.
Okay.
So in the recurring column, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to catch up with you. And I realized that the handouts on the PowerPoint, so I was looking for it. The, so these recurring costs are not included in the tier one, tier two?
That's correct. They've been separated out. They've been just, they've been, I guess, bifurcated, separated out. So we're not, we're trying to keep them from being commingled into that tier one.
That's very helpful, because, and they are expected to be paid for out of our normal budget except for the drainage. Is that correct?
Yes, we do. We don't have a funding source for that.
But now some of these have funding sources already.
Right, like water and wastewater, we have funding sources for that. I mean, again, that's.
That would make up this number here.
Which number are you, 20, I mean?
Well, say on wastewater, the 4,450,000.
Yes, sir.
That's.
You're saying all of them except for the 4 million for drainage?
Right, I mean, we're gonna, you know, we budget on a, we program on an annual basis that we expect to potentially spend on an annual basis, so much in water and wastewater. And that's just an accumulation of that over a five-year period. So yeah, so the only piece that doesn't have a direct funding source as of right now is the drainage.
Thank you.
Anybody else, any other questions?
Okay, moving on. So beyond that, again, those are those, so again, tiers one, two, and three. You've got that summary sheet in your, as a document, so you can follow along. And I'm not going to go into details unless you, well, I'm not ready to go into details, but this just kind of lays out those tiers. And you've got the projects that go along with it, so you can see sort of a little bit more in detail fashion. And again, you all have in your binders, and I believe, Mr. Huckabee, you may have, I hope you received the CIP binder, you have even more detail beyond that of the justifications of each of these projects, okay? So again, just an overview of funding sources. We have cash reserves. We have user fees. Again, water, wastewater, and your water bill. Also, the user fees when it comes to sanitation charges. There are, there is debt, there are property tax supported, revenue supported. We've got a variety of different options when it comes to grants. And then federal stimulus through ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, and then infrastructure bill that's still, again, sort of a nebulous thing, but hopefully be able to make some headway on the infrastructure bill that has been passed over the last number of months. So really, again, tonight we want to pose some questions, but we're not expecting you to answer. We really want these questions answered for November 10th. And again, just for the viewing public and those that are in the audience, and certainly just to kind of put those on the record, really, the question that we have, and again, not for response for today, is do we need to consider a bond program of some sorts for handling our unfunded needs, number one. Number two, would the bond program, is it only to include the original issuance or the original 20 million CO that was originally proposed here a number of months ago? Do you want something very narrowed based on just those projects? Or do you want something bigger, broader, as far as of an outlook for those, to meet those unfunded needs? From a timeframe perspective, when would we want to do this? Is it in May of next year or November of next year? I will tell you, if you want to go broader, larger, more projects, more expansive, May would be very, very challenging, just because of just the amount of research that may be needed. If you wanted to go something more narrow, being just, again, the original CO issuance, whether it's all four packages, three, two, whatever combination thereof, we think May can be doable, because again, most of the heavy lifting as far as the analysis has been done for the most part. But it, but still, there's some timelines that we're not ready to go into tonight, but we will on November the 10th. And so we'll be able to show more, a little bit more, kind of the critical, the critical paths and the major milestones that are needed, because you have to call an election, and there are so many days before that you've got to do. And so there's just some things that need to happen. So we'll be ready to kind of talk more in detail for May or November on November the 10th. The next question is, does the council want to appoint a committee to look at these things, whether it's the condensed version or a broader version? And again, this doesn't have to be necessarily a committee that just calls a bond program. This could be a committee that reviews extensively our capital needs and determines, or at least recommends to the council, that these, some of these things could be cash funded, because we do accumulate cash over the course of a fiscal year, or fiscal years too. Or it's something that's so large, it's so expansive, it's multi-generational, it probably is warranted for a bond program. And then the fifth question is really, because, again, if we go down a path of a bond program, the bond programs are, it's a, those are, those are big efforts. You know, we've got our day-to-day things that we do on a regular basis. Our staff's busy already. And we just don't have the expertise in some areas. It's just a capacity issue. And so really, the request is if we were to go down this path, we need some seed money, some appropriated funds to hire consultants to help us. My suggestion would be that these firms would be architectural firms, engineering firms. These are these firms that do this on a regular basis. They work with cities, they work with counties and school districts to do bond programs, to help facilitate the process, because they do this on a regular basis. Plus, they are, they can assist the committee, again, if you all want to appoint one, with doing some site planning, some analysis, cost estimation, because again, they're in this world each and every day. And so they're out working with their respective clients, doing bids, and they can kind of give guidance as to the price per square foot. Here, what we're seeing as far as the industry when it comes to market increases or inflationary increases, they give a lot more guidance when it comes to that. So we do need some monies for that. That would be our recommendation. And so before I go to number six, are there any questions that we have missed from a standpoint of, again, not answering today, but really asking the council to answer on November the 10th? So we're thinking bond program, yes or no? Bond program, you know, narrowed or broader? November, May, or May, November, you know, and then committees? Anything missing?
Such as timeframe, if there is something beyond the 20 million, when would you need to know that? Is it too late to make, as it stands today, if it was broader, is it too late to make?
Oh, if we were to go, if we were to go broader than just what was originally proposed, it depends on how far you want to go. If it's to, if, I think if it's to, to look at, say, a much broader perspective of city facilities, for example, I'll just use as an example. I think that could be a challenge, because we just don't have a good handle on what that is, and we don't have that experience. If it's more about, we want to do more than, say, 5 million in streets, because we had, say, we had 5 million before, we want to do, we want to do 7 million or 8 million in streets. I think that's probably a little bit more doable, Mr. Bartlett, just because we have that experience. If it's drainage, we can probably do that. But if it's beyond what we originally proposed, not necessarily in numbers, but just in type of infrastructure, I think that could be a challenge for us, if that makes sense, Mr. Bolden.
Thank you.
Councilmember Belinda, I think I saw you.
I think as we engage in a discussion, I think there'll probably be other questions that arise. But to just kind of put them out, I think there'll probably be other ones that discuss things.
And so, okay, and so, and then beyond that, and this is, want to transition over here.
Hold on a minute, let me check with the others, anything? Okay, all right. Thank you. Sorry.
No problem.
Sorry to interrupt.
Absolutely, no problem. And then, so the last question is, is we do need to address, again, knowing that what happened with the CO component didn't occur, we do need to address some of our immediate needs. And this is where I'm going to probably, I'm going to step away and I'm going to, you know, bring in Chief Kiplinger to the next conversations. But what you'll hear from the staff over the course of these next few minutes, as they go through the slides, is to just show you all what's going on in their areas, what's in their shops. And some of the components, Mr. Kiplinger will be presenting, is some of the components at three of the fire stations where we do have funding for, and just kind of show you what is being proposed. And then those two stations that didn't have any funding, and what's being recommended. Again, not reasons to make decisions, but just to kind of give you an idea of kind of where our heads are. And then hopefully come back to you all over the next couple of weeks as you all have molded over, then we can start seeking some direction at that point. And with that, I'd like to, unless you all have any questions, to me, before I sit down, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Kiplinger. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to add, I think this is a really helpful thing to do. And so, Mr. Canizaro, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate us having this discussion.
So thank you, Mayor and council. Keith Kiplinger, your fire chief. Tonight, we're going to talk just very briefly about, about the, what I call Band-Aid repairs that we proposed that are funded in this year's budget, and then talk about some of those, some of those repairs and recommendations that I have, that we'll be bringing back on November 10th for you to consider. Remember that these are basically structural repairs to keep our buildings in the condition they're currently in, and to fix some life safety and environmental issues that we have at those facilities. So if you look at the first column, Fire Station 1, located at North and Austin, the repairs that we have, we have funded, and again, this is not, this is a budget number. We haven't gotten any quotes. We haven't done any design work. And so staff worked with, worked with each other to try to come up with what these numbers are. But we currently have funded 594,000 for all three of these stations. Station 1, North at Austin, that includes repairing, doing some repair to the foundation of the building, repairing three of the exterior walls, which are, which are showing signs of deterioration or problematic, replacing the roof, which is currently leaking. It's providing smoke control, replacing the engine room doors, which are just old and in disrepair. It's doing a little bit of HVAC, mechanical work. Part of that is the heaters that heat the engine room where the fire trucks sit. We're currently taking, getting quotes to replace those, because they don't work. And we have $2 million worth of fire apparatus sitting in a room that doesn't have heaters. So that's kind of what that looks like. And then also budgeted in that line item was design work. The work necessary at that station is going to require some scoping, an architect or engineer to come in and make sure that we're getting apples for apples with regard to roof design, foundation repair, and wall repair. And so that's beyond what staff really is capable of doing. So that's all included in what we asked for in the budget and received. Now, Fire Station 3, there's some heating, ventilation, and air conditioning work that needs to happen, smoke control, and then replacement of two storage buildings, or one divided storage building in the back parking lot that's literally rotting down, and it just needs to be replaced. At Fire Station 4, the only thing we included was smoke control, but we did recognize during the last rain that we've got some roof leaks. So we had a roofing contractor there today, just giving, taking a look, seeing about an emergency repair, but we may be coming back with some bigger repairs for the roof at Fire Station 4, which is by the high school. When we talk about smoke control for all these facilities, we're looking at really three options. One is filtration within the building. One is direct removal, so basically a vacuum cleaner to suck the smoke right from the exhaust pipe out, out the top of the building. And the third is a filter that's mounted on the fire apparatus. And we're getting estimates and ideas about what the best long-term solution is for all three of those options. Again, we don't have that tonight. I'm not ready to move forward. We're still working through that. But those are the things that we're considering. So we're really looking at all the viable options. When we took a look at the next, at the stations that were not funded, because they were originally included in the CO package, we didn't put any money for these repairs, because we thought we could kind of hobble along for 18 or 20 months. But now we've taken a look and do have some recommendations. Again, you can, with regard to these, on the 10th, you can say, I don't want to do that part, or I do want to do that part. Certainly, this is, this is not, this is your decision to make. But my recommendation is that we replace the roof at Fire Station 2, that we do some heating, ventilation, and air conditioning work at that station. Again, the smoke control, and replace those engine room doors or bay doors. Again, that project is going to be big enough that it's going to have a design component. And so hopefully, we can package, if we move forward with, with these two fire stations, hopefully, we can package the design for all the components into one package, and maybe get one architect, one contractor, and to do all the projects. At the downtown station, sealing the exterior walls to stop the water penetration, doing some HVAC replacement, which we have one air conditioning unit that's totally out and another that's kind of on its last leg, replacing the roof on that building, which is actually two roofs, because of the elevation of the building, again, smoke control, replacing the generator with one large enough to supply the entire building, so that during an emergency, we can continue to operate in that facility. It includes a fire suppression system. That's a fire sprinkler system. And then that sounds like it's really out of whack with all the other buildings. And the reality is that if we built a new fire station, it would be fully sprinkled. The codes required that for many, many years. When you're in a 70-year-old building in 1952, they didn't require that in the code in a fire station. But I would say that arguably, the most dangerous building downtown is ours. We park five vehicles in it every single day, that are full of gasoline and diesel. And we have a kitchen without a fire protection system. And so I think that being a downtown citizen, we should step up and sprinkle that building, to make sure that it's here for the next generation and that the buildings on either side of it are here, again, for another generation. That's an expensive cost. And again, we can remove that as part of the deal. When we talk about stranded costs, even if we were to abandon that building down the road and repurpose that building for, for city use or private use, those would not be stranded costs, because that fire sprinkler system will likely be required whenever the renovation happens. And the vast majority of the expense will add to the value of the building. The next thing is a fire alarm system, engine room or bay doors. Again, they're just, they're just quite antique and need to be replaced. And we have some questions with regard to asbestos, and that really falls in with the fire alarm and fire suppression system, because we're going to have to cut through walls and move some things around. And so there is an asbestos survey on the building. There's lots of places that asbestos exists, so there may be a component of doing some abatement on that building, because of the nature of the structural work we're doing. We know that Fire Station 1 on North Street, Station 2 at Main and MLK, and Station 5 all contain asbestos. It's currently covered, and it's not being disturbed, and it's kind of okay. But when we start cutting holes or tearing into walls, we have to address that. And again, that's going to require a design component. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Chief, first of all, thank you for that. The, when you talk about smoke control, is that what the, what you guys were referring to as the cancer mitigation effort?
Yes.
Okay. And could you repeat what the three options are for that?
One is filtration in the engine room. So we would actually move a high volume, a high volume of air through a five-stage filter system. They would filter that out. One is, it's kind of direct capture and removal, so a device that would be basically a hose that hangs from the ceiling that you hook to the, to the exhaust that actually directly vents it out of the building. And the third option is a filter system that installs on the vehicle. So it would be in the exhaust system of the vehicle to provide that filtration. Both of those, all three of those are really viable options. They have different advantages and disadvantages, and we're really going through trying to analyze what that looks like, not only from a cost basis, but what are the true advantages and disadvantages of those, of those options?
And we'll be able to hear about that later.
Down the road, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
I don't really have any questions right now, but I do intend to visit with you on more details before we, before we get to the 10th. So I just wanted to thank you for bringing these to our attention and so we can address these needs.
And again, these don't, these don't really address the quality of life issues or the, this is not paint. This is really just trying to fix, or it's not a lot of paint. It's probably a little bit, because we're going to be moving some walls around at Station 1. But this is really just fixing those things that we've deferred over the years, and then trying to improve the safety of our workplace.
Yes, ma'am.
If we did all these things, then we will have safety, right? And that's, are there other things that we need to be looking at to keep our firefighters safe?
I mean, I think there's always things that we need to be doing to move forward and keep our firefighters safe. But these would, these would address the vast majority of the immediate, the things that I classify as immediate dangers.
Do you have any thoughts about the architectural engineering firms and the kinds of things they do? I think that's really an interesting, I mean, I think, I'm really interested in that.
So, so, so we need to engage a design professional that'll go out and hire those other pieces. But for example, at Station 1 on North Street, a structural engineer needs to seriously look at that foundation and the walls. They need to core some samples out of the concrete and see what, that slab was poured in about 1971, and nobody knows if they put the right amount of steel in it or if the concrete was the, there's no, there's no documentation of that. At Station 5, we also have some brick failures on the east wall of the downtown fire station that are causing the brick to fall away from some windows on the second floor. And so we need a structural engineer to look at that and put a plan together. With regard to the roofs, the main thing is making sure that we scope. But if you call three roofing contractors and say, come fix this roof, they're all going to give you a quote, but they may not all have exactly the same system or exactly the same design. And so the architect will be able to say, this is the system we want, this is the design we want, and make sure we're looking at apples to apples across the board. And so I think that's, that's fairly, fairly standard. Now, with regard to Fire Station 3 on the Southwest Loop and Station 4 out by the high school, I don't look for there to be a need for that design element or that scoping, because those are really projects that we can handle in-house. Replacing a storage building is pretty easy for me to do.
Part of the reason I'm asking about this is because several of the people that I've consulted with or who have called me have basically engineering and architecture questions. So they, we might be able to add some of these questions that might be able to be answered in these studies, or if that's okay, have a little broader discussion that includes some of the questions.
Sure. And if I have those questions ahead of time, I could probably have a decent answer. But if I get them on the fly, I may not.
Right, right, right. And I think, and I'm happy to share them, or we can talk about them tonight, or we can talk about them on the 10th or whatever. But, but I think a lot of them are.
A big part of this, too, is getting a design professional to come in and take a hard look at it and make sure that what we've identified as, as problems. and make sure that what we've identified as problems really are, that we're identifying the right problem and making sure we're not throwing money away. And so...
So whenever, however you want to do it, I mean, I can later on come and talk with you all about it. Or, you know, like one person was talking about the tree causing the damage up on, which fire station is it? Napone, I think, is on North Street, right? And really, they're just questions that people have. That was an engineer, I think he talked with you probably, too. So I love the idea of engaging, you know, an engineering firm to take a really good, hard look at all the things that we need. I'll just come and visit, or we can bring you...
Let me know when you want to.
Thank you, Councilman, for those questions. Now, just take Station 1 for instance. The repairs and the maintenance, this is not, is this a long-term fix? If we bring it up to code this year, I mean, in its budget year, is that, did you mention 18 months or something in that area?
Okay. So when we go to Station 1 on North Street, this is patching. This is not bringing the building to current code by any means. And it's not, this is not a 20-year repair. What we've proposed here is simply leveling up the floor as best we can, making sure the wall's not going to fail, and replacing the roof. I am not an engineer or an architect or a contractor, but I believe that the right, long-term, if we were going to stay in that building another 30 years, the right answer is to tear off the section that was built in 1971 and rebuild it. I believe that firmly because it's just not, it's just not a long-term fix. What we proposed here is shoring it up.
Thank you.
So a lot of that is stranded cost. If somebody buys it down the road, if we decide, if you decide that we're going to move and relocate that station, somebody buys it and pushes that building over, this is money that's gone. But it's money that's essential just to keep it operating today.
Anything else for the chief?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, Council, Jessica Sal, Community Services Assistant Director. Thank you all for having me today, and hopefully, I'm a decent substitute for Brian. I won't say great, but decent. So I'm here to talk about the rest, the park restroom component of our former CO package and kind of our needs today. You can see in the map in front of you, everything in green is our, one of our park facilities. The ones with the names listed next to it are the ones that had restrooms in the former CO package that we'll be talking about a little today. And before I get started with the restrooms, I do also want to mention that in our CO package, we had two park playgrounds listed in there. You won't see numbers for that today just because with playgrounds, it's either you build a playground or you don't, essentially. And so for that, we don't have replacement costs, but our city crews are going and taking out some of the unsafe park equipment that was still there. It was kind of limping along, but we've removed that. But at Mill Pond Park and Ritchie Street, we'll still have basketball courts and then our swing sets. But you won't see replacement costs for any playgrounds in here. So as far as the restrooms, we tasked our parks facility, our parks maintenance, excuse me, our parks crews and our facility maintenance crews with doing an assessment of our park restrooms at Benita Creek Park, Mill Pond Park, Ritchie Street Park, and Robert McCrimmon Park. And then there's also Lake Nacogdoches West, which we'll get to in just a second. But we tasked them to look at these restrooms that we had proposed in the CO package to kind of see if there's any way to rehabilitate them, you know, fix them up, see if we could keep them moving for a little bit longer. We did a detailed look at each facility and came to the conclusion there's really no way to repair these restrooms. There's a multitude of issues. We've listed some here. As far as, you know, there's missing facilities, there's missing fixtures, there's leaking plumbing. There are some of the restrooms where the metal walls actually don't connect to the foundation anymore because it's just rusted away, which is a big issue. And then, of course, they're very hard to maintain. They weren't really built as far as, you know, in consideration of how you clean these restrooms. They're designed just to be kind of hosed down and then to drain out the sides, which has kind of led to some of the rust issues we're having here. We also can't keep them open in the winter because the pipes do freeze, and we have to cut off the water. And so we really came to the conclusion there's really no way to repair those. And so kind of the proposal for this part is to demolish those restrooms. Since they can't be up to code, they are closed to the public right now just because they have so much damage. There are kind of some safety concerns. And so that was kind of the plan for these couple, or at least the proposal. Of course, I'm asking you to vote on any of that tonight, but to consider it at least. Also, the Lake Nacogdoches West park, these restrooms are a little bit newer, and you can see they're a different style. They're more of a brick foundation, so a little sturdier. Our parks guys and our maintenance guys also went and looked at these. They did come up with a cost for rehabbing these, and it would be about $25,000 per restroom, so $50,000 total. And that would be with city crews doing some of this work, repairing the fixtures, repairing plumbing, installing new stall doors, some painting, and then some new entrance doors on those as well. And this, of course, we will bring back to you in mid-November, but we wanted you all to see some real-world costs on these. Our CO numbers for the park restrooms are really kind of staff's best estimate on those. Now, we have some real-world pricing because we just got back bids for four park restrooms that are in our current budget. So we have some real numbers as of October 6 when we open these. Of course, just to keep in mind, numbers with construction fluctuate. We bid these out in, first in August of 2021, and then got new bids back October 6 of this year, and they're $12,000 more than they were. So there is going to be an increase in cost there. We looked at prefabricated restrooms. They come out to a little over $251,000 per restroom. For four that we bid out for this year is a little over $1 million for prefabricated. New build would be about $247,000 per restroom for a total of $990 for four restrooms. And also to keep in mind, the prefabricated restroom cost does not include demolition of what is currently there. The new build restrooms do include that price where it would be a demolition of the current restrooms and rebuilding a new restroom there. And then, of course, we've got updated prices on demolition of restrooms, which would be about $5,000 per restroom for a total of $20,000 to demolish four restrooms. So in summary, I wanted to talk about our immediate needs for these restrooms in our parks. So our immediate needs would be to demolish the restrooms at Benita Creek Park, Mill Pond Park, Ritchie Street Park, and Robert McCrimmon for a cost of $20,000. And then the repair cost for Lake Nacogdoches West to rehab those two restrooms at a cost of $25,000 per restroom for a total of $50,000. So our immediate needs would be about $70,000 to demolish those restrooms and then give the Lake Nacogdoches West rooms a few more years of life. Of course, they wouldn't be brand-new looking or anything like that, but they would at least get a few more years out of those. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have, or at least try to.
Any questions from Ms. Sal?
Ritchie Street, you mentioned that playground equipment, like a...
Yes, sir.
Didn't we budget some playground equipment for Ritchie Park?
Yes, we did. And Ritchie Street, yes, so those, I think I've written them. Ritchie Street will be getting a new all-abilities playground this year. We don't have an installed yet, but there is playground equipment out there right now that is unsafe or missing parts, things like that. So that has all been taken off. And right now, there will just be swing sets until we put the new playground in. But that one is coming.
But that was for last year's budget, though, right?
Yes. And so I have the wrong one written down. So it's Mill Pond and McCrimmon. So, excuse me, I misspoke on that one. So it's McCrimmon that will have the equipment taken out, but will still have the swing set and the basketball court. Apologies.
Thank you.
I might be missing something, so maybe you can help me.
Okay.
I just have a question about the, so the immediate needs. The four park restrooms under demolition are the restrooms that would have been included in the CO. Is that correct? Okay. And then the fifth one was the Lake Nacogdoches, which can be repaired.
Correct.
Why, and then the ones that you have on restroom pricing are already in?
Yes, those are in this year's budget. So we just wanted you to have some real-world pricing because all the restrooms, other than Lake Nacogdoches, are the exact same design of what we have currently.
Okay. So why is the demolition of these park bathrooms being listed as an immediate need when there isn't going to be a rebuild? And if that's a dumb question, I'm sorry.
No, it's not. So right now, they're listed as a demolition because they are currently closed to the public because some of them are leaking so badly, they're structurally unsound. There's really no way to use them, and they can't be rehabbed. So they're closed to the public, and so the $20,000 demolition would just be to demolish them so that way we don't have vandalism, we don't have anybody trying to sneak in and use them and, you know, potentially get injured or anything like that. So it is just a clear demolition, and there would not be anything that's placed for the time being until council decides how we proceed with, you know, new restrooms or whatever the decision is. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor, may I make a statement real quick? Ms. Sal mentioned that, can you advance it to the next slide with the table? I'm sorry, one more. On the new builds, we do have monies budgeted for those restrooms, but we don't have all the monies budgeted for those restrooms. I just want to make sure that you're aware of that.
How much short are we?
We're quite a bit short.
We are?
About $300,000 short.
$350,000.
Worse. So we just wanted you to be aware of that. We'll be coming to you all here in the next few weeks to a meeting to discuss how you want us to proceed with that. Those monies were set aside back in 2018. And so as you recall, as Ms. Sal mentioned, we did go out to bid sometime last year, got bids. They were not favorable. You all rejected them. We tried again this year, just most recently, and the prices have gone up. And so those numbers were based on, the budgeted numbers were based on 2018 estimates. And so obviously, things have gotten worse. And so I just wanted you, I didn't want you to walk away that we had it fully budgeted, but we do have some budget dollars for that.
Okay, thank you.
So how would that shake out then? If, so we have some monies in the current budget and say we don't make up those $350,000 for whatever reason, how would that?
Well, it'd be, it's a financial discussion with budget and finance as to that the options are, do we utilize some available fund balance? Or do you just reject the bids? And again, ultimately, if you reject the bids, if these restrooms are in such poor shape, we would probably recommend that you at least spend the money to demolish them and not have any restrooms. So we'll have options, but if you want to proceed, it's going to require some use of additional funds.
All or nothing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Steve Bartlett, Director of Public Works and City Engineer. So I want to talk to you about our civil infrastructure, kind of, and we categorize it again as immediate needs. We have a lot of needs, so we're pushing what we think is probably the top of that pile, again, to immediate. So we're looking at possibly asking you to consider seven of our priority areas for storm drainage. We have 22 areas that have been identified. A number of those have been designed already, and a number have design left to do. About 1.4 million, they, the list that we have that we're proposing here would be all be shovel-ready. So we'll be able to react very quickly. Again, there's no funding in our current budget or our CIP for storm drainage. Water system, immediate, I'm sorry, yes.
Which of the, of the 22, do you have a list of which drainage? I'm so sorry.
And again, these are probably preliminary. We weren't doing a lot of weeds tonight. So we'll tell you what we initially considered. Let me pull it up, Council. So we are looking, and again, having the ones that are designed floated to the top of my pile primarily. And this would be Humphrey Road, Perry Drive South, Burke Street, Perry Drive North, several projects along Old Lufkin Road that we've bundled, and the project on Logan's Port, and also a storm drain that goes through a portion of Mike Perry Motors on South Street. Is that too fast? I'm sorry.
No, I got them all. I was interested in the Kenbrook one and, as you know...
Sure. And the Kenbrook one, of course, hasn't been designed. So I picked from a list. And I will tell you, this is negotiable. We're trying to make a bite at our storm drainage projects, and that's the truth. So we can swap projects, we can do it. But since we've already paid for the engineering services, we put those as kind of more immediate. Our immediate needs in this part of the infrastructure world can be a little different because I do have a big basket I'm pulling out of. So I can pull out more immediates, I promise you. We can put some back and swap them. So I will tell you, there's some variability in that. Like I said, we'd like to get on the ground and moving so that, so we're spending funds at current construction rates. And so I think having the pre, the ones that are pre-designed are in advantage of some sort.
If you could look at the ones where people are actually in danger of losing their homes, and that's what I'm concerned about is amongst you are really, and see what you can do about it.
I will tell you a number of those, too, that we, the reason those are designed is because they were very urgent, and we went ahead and spent funds, not that we're considering tonight, to engineer those because they were critical. But I absolutely understand because there's some on the list, like you and I have talked, and Kenbrook and things that have other damage potential. And so we have a whole list, around 4 million on that list, including the Kenbrook project, that have either damaged the streets, structures, or just hazards in general. So absolutely.
And I think there's another one, I can't remember the street, but, I mean, the home is in danger of...
Okay.
She's in danger of losing her home.
I'd be happy to talk to you more at any fee.
Anybody who's going to lose their homes, I think that's kind of something we need to look at.
And we may even want to kind of look at the list and see what the danger is on each of them. Because it could be a street collapse or other things, I guess. And my second list that isn't designed varies everywhere from stuff we've been out on and kind of eyeballed, and this is staff, all the way to ones where I've just have received habitual complaints for, say, street flooding, for example. And so, yeah, prioritizing those is a step we can still go through. But certainly, all these are needy projects that we talked about. And let me also back up. And here, in just a minute, we're going to talk maybe about how to bundle these, as you've probably already seen, we've reviewed the package. And if we change dollars, as we move dollars around between different areas in a minute, then we may be able to fund more drainage or less drainage. And so keep in mind that all we're doing tonight is showing you things that are needs, maybe a way to bundle those, and then we can move that line between them, which means we can add or delete projects.
Before you move on, could you send us all of these projects of that 22 and then what our designs are on those?
Sure. And Councilman, some of them, I'm not going to be able to scope the design out very well. I'm going to tell you, we've identified a project that may be possible pipe failures under a road. And more investigation may then yield more answers to that. So some of them may be early schematic. Some of them, I know exactly what's wrong, but we just haven't engineered them. So I'll try to outline a variety of those.
I think that works. It'd be helpful for me, too.
Yeah.
I'd like to see, yeah.
And I've got all those catalogued, and I'm just lucky I took a picture of my list before I left.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
So in our water system, so we are taking a stab at about 3 million. And I've got a round number there because we have a whole lot of projects that we've identified that are distribution system project, they're line, they're line work involving. And these are actually something that's come up since we first showed you that. Our water system superintendents have come to me and said, "Steve, we have some problems in the system that we think may be non-compliant sometimes." And this is as far as disinfection and nitrates and circulation and things that you and I don't normally think of as a water break problem. And so what we'd like to do, we've actually moved those up in our priority list since we last visited about this. And we've got a whole list. We're currently negotiating with an engineering firm to try to give us a preliminary engineering review of that and come up with real-life costing and prioritization. Some of the things we don't have solutions for. We just know that we're experiencing some lower disinfection levels or higher nitrate levels, and we need to look at system circulations or system, different things. So some of this needs analysis. So my 3 million is because I feel like that may cover the whole, the dozen, the list of a dozen things that he's asked. These are, only one of the projects on his list is a line replacement of circulation line replacements. The rest of them are all other system changes. So it's a bit odd to bring this to you that way because you're used to me telling you on so-and-so street, we want to replace the line. This is a little bit broader system, but I will tell you, this is much more health, life, safety, and a higher priority to try to look at the water quality and water safety issue first. And unfortunately, they, not fortunately, but they are mixed. So distribution and having things is part of that, so.
I have another question on this. I understand, you know, as I've been visiting with people, that in the past we mapped where the leaks and the breaks in the water lines were, and that helped to identify when we needed to replace water lines. Is that...
No, that's not true. So we, in the past, we haven't had much other than a very rudimentary work order system. And it was mostly to track parks and... system, and it was mostly to track parks and stuff and keep accounting. We, since we implemented our NAC 311 several years ago, we have used that platform to start to track leaks with. So even if you don't call me with a leak, our staff is putting it in the system. So only since that point in time have we actually begun to map those leaks where I can start to kind of have hotspots. So it's very, very minimal data in that database for comparatively. So, but in the past, we haven't had really good data to do that for you.
Okay.
Other than just hearsay, my guys are going, hey, I think we remember, we've probably done ten patches on that line behind, you know, old Stonefort Bank or something, and periods that they remember, but we didn't have a lot of way to quantify that. We do now, and we're doing it now, we have for a couple of years, so. But that's all the data that I have, that answers your question.
Thank you.
Let me just say, no, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Could we get a map of those hotspots? And I know that's kind of something you have to build, but I'd like to see what, you know, where are our areas, because I just don't know that answer.
Sure.
And I know that that's something that GIS can handle pretty easily. I know it will take time.
Absolutely, we can do it. Now, that probably is not something I can have by the tenth, quite honestly, the process in that data, so.
Certainly not.
Or you could close your eyes and throw a dart, and you would probably hit one of them. Because we do have a pretty broad area of those problems, but no, be happy to do it. The reason we haven't been pushing that as the basis for CIP yet is because we just have such a minimal amount of data. So if we do something on the order of forty line repairs a year, okay? And some of those may just be a leaking saddle tap in front of your yard that I'm not counting as a major system repair. So we have a handful every year that we're doing, a couple of years of that data is in a lot of spots to really do heat mapping for.
Right.
So let me see if we can extract those and kind of put them together and start to give you that. I just want to realize it's kind of data minimal. And so if you start, this is a horrible area, well, it may be because there's two repairs on that street instead of none, and that may or may not rank a red spot, but it's going to get one. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I had understood we, there was GIS mapping of even the little leaks that helped determine.
Yeah. No, ma'am, there has not been.
Thank you very much for clarifying that.
Mr. Bolden, did you have something?
On the, pick the water system, immediate needs, and no funding in the current budget. Could you tell me why it's not in the current budget for funding? I mean, is this, it says immediate need, high priority. I would like to think in the past that it would at least attempt to put it in the budget.
So we have a million dollars in our CIP, how we budget, that will allow us to address water system problems.
Okay.
And so what I'm saying is, I can spend that every year on things that are happening as we talk right now out there in the system. This particular item are not just waterline leak repairs, these are things that I want to do in overall system analysis and system health that I did not put in the CIP. So they would be in addition to the money that we have already budgeted for that. Have we used all that? Some years we may use seven hundred and fifty thousand of it, some years, you know, I may beg and try to use over a million of it and come to you. But in general, this is, these things are in addition, and I'm telling you, they are urgent. So if we were doing budgets again today, I would, and we weren't looking at some form of long-term possible financing even, we would be coming to you and say, our CIP needs have risen this amount, and we want to look at what that impact is, and how do we get revenue to fund that? And so, so these are in addition to what's my normal money, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about rebuilds and new, could it be new projects?
Could this be new projects? Yes, sir. I think these are going to be fixes, is the best way I can tell you. And some of that may be replacement, some of it may be line work that adds circulation where I don't have circulation, and why am I, why are my chlorine levels dropping here? And we're running out and trying to supplement it in the middle of the night and watch it, because we do monitor it, y'all, and we do this every day, but it's beginning to be problematic. And so some of the solutions, Councilman, may be that we need additional line work infrastructure. What I'm telling you is, we haven't analyzed it, this is a new thing for us. And so we're currently, and I'm going to pause here a second, you remember in our ARPA projects, we actually, following their process, we have gone out and we have two engineering firms, actually, we've selected out of a statement or out of a request for qualifications, we like to select two engineering firms. And one of the engineering firms, we'd like to assign this water system. And so we're currently negotiating what that would mean in terms of fees and scope with them. So I'm not prepared to give you their contract tonight, but I will tell you, we've been through the long selection process, scored them and made a selection, and I have an engineer reviewing this to try to help me literally answer the questions you're asking me, which is, what are the solutions? And I'm saying, I've got a lot more problems than I have solutions in this pile of three million.
Thank you.
Anyone else, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay, wastewater. And again, we have about twenty-six projects we've identified, we have completed a capital project study. As I said, we've done with water system, too, but what I just showed you was not part of that study, this was my special needs. This case, it is line work. So we've identified about seven that I think kind of rise towards the top of that group of twenty-six projects. That's why my number is a little bit sharper here, one point eight seven one million. That includes contingencies and things that have been built into it, but these have been estimated in great detail. And again, happy to share all these lists with you, but we've just recently completed all this, so I have a good handle on line work here. Again, these are shovel-ready or would be within sixty days shovel-ready, and we don't have any funding, Councilman Bolden, again, in addition to the million that we normally program for undefined sewer replacements. So this would be in addition to that. Any questions?
I guess I'll just say, if you could include those at your convenience.
Okay.
Is one of those areas where we just recently had that major break in the line, is that?
And the Press Road area? Off the top of my head, I'm going to have to go look to answer that, and I apologize.
That's all right, I was just curious.
So we did, we've actually had two line breaks close to that area. We just found another one this week that you're not aware of, and it was just in the bank seeping, so it wasn't a big gusher, but we have had two line breaks. And it's, anytime we put sewer lines across creeks or along the edge of creeks, it's problematic. And so, yeah, it's things we'd like to fix in the long term, absolutely. But I will have to check to answer that, and I apologize.
Are we getting any penalties for that break, or?
Well, we have not yet. We do the reporting, as we should immediately, and do the public notifications as we should immediately, and it's just up to them, up to TCQ if they decide they want to pursue. We have paid some penalties before, specifically, one time we had sewer release and made its way to somebody's pond and had a fish kill, and then they complained, and then we got investigated and had a fine for that. And so it's very possible, but at this point, we have not. They do, I'm not trying to make this small, but every city has sewer breaks, and they leak into storm drains. And so it is not an unusual daily occurrence across Texas, if you will. So they just kind of monitor, I think, how many you have and what you're doing to solve it, and that's my best guess. But the answer is, as of today, no.
And you'd mentioned our timely response as well as.
Yes, I mean, we, the, we follow the rules, we publish it in the newspaper, you guys get it the first day it happens, and then we make, we notify our body, and we go through a process, and which we did on the Press Road question, where we disinfect, and then we test E. coli, and then we may disinfect again, which we did on that, we had to go back and continue to do it. And as we found out, we had yet a second one seeping, which didn't help the numbers. And so we found it and corrected it this week, so.
And all of this, I know somebody had said, was that part of the CO? And obviously, none of that was on the certificates of obligation, that's a revenue bonds or something else. Okay.
And the list that I will send you of the twenty-six, whatever the number was, projects, are projects we've identified, projects that historically have been problematic, projects that have dumped into creeks, there's more than twenty-six. That's what I need you to understand. We're going to do this, and you're going to ask me about a project that isn't on that list, because two days from now, it will break. So, y'all, we're just making a stab at what we've known to be bad actors.
And on all of these, if it's possible, this is one of the questions that I don't absolutely have to have this information, but if it's easy to give us, it would be helpful to have it on a map, GIS mapping.
And I have it.
Okay, thank you.
So both the water projects and the sewer projects, and again, we've been using consultants to help us develop these with our staff, they're completely mapped out, and then there's project-by-project detail behind it. I will tell you, both of them are at the draft watermark stage, and so probably they would prefer I let them finalize it and seal it, but I will do that, and it'll give you cost estimates, generalized citywide location, and then a project-by-project detail, and it's highly exciting to read, as you count gate valves and manholes, it's pretty cool, so.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, no, I'll provide you that detail, that's not a problem, so. The storm drain stuff has been packages we've had designed, and then lists that we've kept internally, so it's a little stranger animal, but I have that as well, so. Okay, so funding options for immediate needs. We've been talking, and we had visited with you a number of months ago about our ARPA monies, which were about eight point one in total gross, and we got head nods from you to basically spend that on water and wastewater infrastructure. So as, the way it laid out initially was about around number six million a sewer, because it was shovel-ready, and about two million or so in water. And again, the shovel-ready played a role of letting us get that done. If you remember, these ARPA dollars have a, I think, three-year, three-year time tag, so we're on a run, and we've already had money since a year August.
Yes.
So we're in year two of the three. So having projects that are shovel-ready are important, so. There was a grants consultant that's helping us manage this, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, that's why the water number's lower than two, but we were talking generally that ratio. What staff is thinking about and is asking for you to consider and talk to us on November tenth is kind of a redistribution of that. These are numbers you just saw from everybody, so these are not new numbers. But to put both storm drainage, water wastewater, the fire, the unfunded fire station work, the eight hundred thousand, the park restrooms, the demolition and repairs, then some money for architectural and engineering fees, and our grants consultant in there. These fees haven't been negotiated, we're using percent of construction. One of them, one of the two firms would monitor the construction phase services of all the sewer stuff, and one of them would help us with the waterline design and then construction phase of it. So we've just estimated fees for both of those. So, anyway, this is food for thought, this totals up to the same thing, but it's a way to maybe achieve some of these near-term needs of what's physically cash for us, fund balance. And you guys can move the lines, you can move the lines. Any questions?
So you kind of just stole Pam's part of the presentation.
It was all good. That's all folks.
So the architect and engineer fees of seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, oh, I'm sorry, did I interrupt?
No, no, you go ahead.
Okay, that has to do with the water wastewater, all that, correct?
Yes.
And those are different architects and engineers, right? And then the fire station, the eight hundred thousand includes the architect and engineering fees for that kind of consultation.
So if the ARPA, let me answer it kind of oddly, so if the ARPA money, if the, if ARPA money is used for the fire station part, then the professionals have to be selected through the process. That would be like community development block grant funds, TDA's process for selection. That's about a sixty-day thing. So if we're going to hire an architect to help us with the fire station stuff, then a separate architect, then they would have to go through that process. I've done that for the two engineers I'm going to recommend to you. Another alternative is to use the two engineers that we've selected and let them assist Chief with looking at the, because they have structural engineers on staff as well. So it's something he and I haven't talked in great deal, but I do have selected engineers who could scope the structural and roof components of this as well.
So you've already talked about what engineering firm or engineers who would do that.
Yeah, well, we have two firms that we are currently in negotiation with, and so I haven't brought it forward on the slide, they are in negotiation. And so those firms would be capable of using ARPA dollars to do any of this. Or we can just have a sixty-day lag and go back through select, request for qualifications for yet another firm.
Are these firms that specialize in fire stations, or you're?
No, no, they are not. The needs that you're showing to you on the immediate needs are not necessarily fire station specific, they're structural engineer problems, they're roof problems, which can be done by architects or engineers, regardless of what's housed in the structure, having, coming up with the right membrane roof and the right parapet wall surfacing can be done by a non-fire station engineer. If we move in at some later point, not tonight's discussion, but to talk about new design, new builds, new schematics for new buildings or completely renovated buildings, then we're going to talk to some, we need somebody that's very fire station specific with experience. What Chief has proposed to you for his immediate needs are, quite honestly, structural in nature, generally speaking. Chief, is that?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions? I think we're good there. Are you going to come back and kind of give us our charge?
Yes.
Next time?
So again, we provided a lot of information, you know, you've got handouts, there's some follow-up that we need to provide, some additional data points that you all requested, so we'll get those to you as soon as we possibly can. So really, again, just kind of in summarization, this is kind of what we've been thinking, I wanted to share it with you, kind of where we've been these last number of weeks, or last few weeks. And so really, it's just a matter of, you know, what is your pleasure when it comes to November the tenth, as far as providing some answers as how do we want to proceed? One thing I didn't say, and I shouldn't, I apologize, is if the council is inclined to appoint a committee, one thing that we'd like to do, because time's of the essence, if you all are interested in doing that, we would ask that you start thinking of some names of people who would want to participate, and you all have been on committees, and we're on, involved in a couple of committees right now through the various strategic plans, and the larger, the more people you add, the more difficult it is to manage larger committees. So not telling you what to do, but just requesting that if you do think of some people to serve, we would request that it be a manageable size.
And you're thinking ten to fifteen people would be a manageable size?
Yes, sir. Fifteen would be our preference, be max, just because there's a lot of work to do. I would imagine that, again, I would assume that we would divide up into subcommittees to look at different components, and so I would see people floating between various areas of review. So it's not like we would have very, very small groups, but we would have multiple-sized groups within various areas of a potential bond package, or at least capital improvement plan to look at, whether it be facilities, drainage, streets, water, sewer, you know, just the various components that would be part of a bond package.
I like the idea of a committee. Does anybody differ? Is there a reason that we wouldn't want to do that?
So again, not to take action, but if you do think of names, we would love to be able to, if you could bring some of those potentially November tenth, because again, regardless whether we go May or November, times are ticking, and so we would love to be able to try to maybe kick something off in December, potentially just to say hello with the group, so that we can really begin in earnest working on in January. We got to get, we got to hit, we got to go. That's really it.
I have a question.
Sure.
It might be a Pam question.
I'll get that over with.
Maybe, I don't know, I don't know. When we were discussing setting up this work session, I think there was discussion of other funding sources, and it looks like the funding for the immediate needs has just come from reallocating the ARPA funds alone. I know, for example, that we had in the current budget that we just passed three million dollars of reserves purchases approved, and I understood that one option that we had was to look at other projects that we had funded through other sources, not just the ARPA money, and seeing whether there were some projects that could be knocked off to further years to free up more monies for some of these immediate needs. Is the reason that this presentation didn't include those other potential funding sources only because looking at your immediate needs, reallocating the ARPA funds did it? Or is there another reason?
Pretty much. I mean, the reallocation of the ARPA monies allows, again, it's, I would assume, gives you the greatest flexibility, and so certainly we can go back and look at other funds that have already been budgeted and, you know, delay those for another year. So that can totally be looked at, but really, the ARPA was just because it was monies that were available, and they were originally allocated for two specific things.
Right.
And so this gave us the opportunity to spread that over multiple things, quite honestly, without affecting our fund balance or affecting any of our operations or ongoing capital needs that we're currently funded and working on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
So really, that concludes our.
Anything else do you have?
Components, Mayor, Council.
I have questions, but I'm, I'm gonna let other people.
Go ahead.
All right, here are some of mine. Um, I know there were a lot of questions about, um, what we need, um, you know, including the downtown fire station and whether it's, and some of these, I think, might need to be asked at the same time we're asking about structural questions. So I'm wondering if it's possible for us to think about engaging, um, um, engineers who actually are, are, um, fire station engineers or engineering and architect, architecture firms, both in the immediate needs and in the long term. Because if we do, if we are looking at passing a bond, um, in May or in, uh, November, I think we all need to be on the, the same page. Uh, we all need to do it together and we really need to educate all of us so that we can answer all of the big questions. And some of those big questions involved, um, um, engineering questions. So I would hope you might consider, uh, engaging a firm for that. That also includes emergency needs, reviewing that.
I mean, and we can certainly do that. And, and my initial reaction or thoughts would be that in regards to, um, the, whether it's circulation or the size of the full utility of, of the existing facilities now, I, I think that really would, again, just in my opinion, Councilmember, would be more appropriate for the bond committee because they really are gonna delve into the weeds of tours and, and seeing how the facilities are used and, and, and how, I mean, that would just be my initial thoughts, is that it would be more appropriate for that area to be really delved into by the committee itself, if you all point that, that's what you think it should be.
Well, um, so that brings me to what is the role of the bond committee. But even before that, if we're looking at what are emergency needs, you know, a fire station, uh, those who specialize in engineering with fire stations and with, um, uh, and architecture, they might be able to say, wait a minute, we, this one, we should wait, um, and, and postpone this or do this little bit and then actually package it into the bond. So I'm just saying, there are specialists in this, so. And you don't have to answer it right now. We don't have to debate it, but I just, uh, I've had several people, um, suggest that we do that immediately. We start to look at that to answer the question. And I don't think it needs a, a committee to ask, you know, for, for them to do that. So that's one.
Would, would these consultants have any expertise that we're talking about in number five there on the? I mean, would they have any expertise in functionality and, and, and that kind of thing? That we're contemplating hiring as a part of the proposal?
I'm talking about engaging a, a firm that, um, and I've asked around about firms when, you know, when people asked me and, um.
So what, what we're proposing tonight with regard to the, to the additional ask for the two stations that were excluded from the budget is simply, um, is simply, uh, design and repairs that will keep the buildings held together. They won't, that won't in any way affect any future plans with regard to modification of the buildings. And I, I absolutely concur with Mr. Bartlett that any engineering firm that's qualified or architecture firm could do the scoping that we need, um, with regard to the roofs and the repair of the, of the structural elements. Um, and we're not, we're not talking about redoing any, any flow. We're not moving any, any interior walls. We're not adding bathrooms. We're not, we're not doing any of those things. We're simply, um, simply the, the exterior of the building, making them safe. And, um, so, so I think, and I think that if we're gonna look at moving forward long-term, um, there's a significant cost involved in doing a fire station, a true fire station architectural and design kind of study. Um, and I think that, uh, I think it would be premature to engage those firms at this point. That's my opinion.
But those, the, the engineering firms that we're talking about to, um, design, um, address your immediate needs are not necessarily the same ones that the mayor just brought up in number five, which has to do with appropriating different funds to engage consultants for a bond package.
Right, so the, so the number five for the bond proposal, and I could take this, would be a, a group of, uh, an engineering firm that would help guide the bond committee process or the capital needs committee process. And they would, I think the expectation would be that they would bring in an architecture firm that specializes in public safety facilities as a, as a second chair or a third chair to help them guide that portion of the process.
That's helpful.
Well, the recommendation was made also for the repairs, partly because, um, a fire station, that somebody who specializes in fire stations may be able to, um, recommend repairs that then can satisfy more issues. But I'm not an engineer, but engineers did, um, suggest that, uh, as something we should be looking at right away. And, uh, both for the repairs and for the, uh, bond, but I can only forward that thought. Um, I'm also interested in, um, whatever we entertain on November tenth, I would really like to have a full understanding of not just our bonds, but also, um, not just the general obligation bonds, but whatever revenue bonds that we'll be discussing in the future. Um, I think we need to look at, at all at one time. I know revenue bonds don't necessarily come before, uh, the voters, but we, but they do impact the, all of the people of Macadocia. So I would love to see the whole package. And I'd also like to see, um, some calculation of the limit of our tax burden. You know, what we should be expecting, um, what we can expect, what, what, and maybe also some comparisons of, of tax burden for communities our size and our income level and with our, our tax, um, uh, our, our taxing ability, uh, right now, the current property taxes. So all of that, I think, is a, is a big, um, is something we really need to.
For the tenth?
Um, yeah, I'd like to get the whole, the whole picture because then, that'll help me think through, um, the dates and the amount of money and, I mean, just a general idea. We don't have to have all of the various, the specifics, but.
But, but again, I, I think we provided that in these documents about the, the needs. I, I mean, we can try to provide some level of detail for the tenth. I think that's part of the request is, do you want to be narrowed in focus of the outlook or do you want to be broader? And, and just that I get, have heard is you want to be broader. And I think that's kind of the role of the committee is to do some of that. Now, we can certainly be able to provide a little guidance on what a penny on the tax rate generates in, in debt. Gives you some guidance on that, so you can kind of see if you need, I'll just say, if you need ten million, it's a, and I'm just doing round numbers. If you need ten millions, ten cents. I know that's not true. If you need twenty, it's twenty. I mean, we can, I think we can gauge you that way. Um, but outside of it being able to get our full debt capacity, I think there are some, some, probably some, some ratios based on what we sell in water, what we sell in sewer, we can tell you that. Um, and then some limits on, on what the statutory limits are for, for general fund debt issuance. You can't just raise tax rates all the way up. Um, but to be able to give you a, a full scope of, of what the bond package would look like or some of the, I don't know if we're ready for that.
Well, I would like to see both the revenue bonds and the general obligation bonds that we're talking about, a bigger picture. I think that would be very helpful. And, and, um, this is probably the, the time to mention this, that we want to get this right. It's more important to get it right than to go quickly, is my, is my opinion. We want to really make sure we have all the information. And we, and depending on who this committee is, I'm hoping that we're having a committee that will help inform and ask good questions rather than selling something, because the biggest issue is answering questions. And really make sure, making sure we have the information we need to have, to make good, good, um, good decisions. And so that to me is, is really important that we have this information, including, um, all, all of the information we're talking about.
So, I just want to jump in. I, I know I asked you this earlier, but I'm gonna ask it in front of the entire council. Just being able to figure out what our debt capacity is on the general fund side, certainly statutorily and what, what our residents can, can take, but also on the, on the utility fund side. How much debt do we have currently across all funds? How much debt capacity do we have? Um, how leveraged are we in both of those sides? I, I think that's the, that's the picture that I want to see. Do we know how much, uh, committee will recommend back to us for a bond program? Now, we don't know that right now. We're, we're too far out. But knowing, what's our starting point? What's our, what's our top amount? I'm not saying we should go for that top amount. I'm saying we should know what, what we can handle based on, you know, all of those ratios that you talked about.
We'll make a stab at it.
Anybody else?
That's all we got.
Okay. All right, that's the end of our agenda, so we're adjourned.